Part of this WIFA grant is getting funding to outfit those wells. So hopefully, we can get that done sooner and get those wells running yet the spring or summer.
How is the testing coming on, uh, well seventeen and I think there was one other one that we're still waiting on test results?
Yeah, we have, uh, well twenty-five, which is the latest one put in as part of the, uh, ARPA grant we got through Mojave County. And it's not producing as much as we had hoped, but it's still a good producer. Um, well seventeen that you had mentioned, uh, is a good producer and these combined will really help us in the future.
I just know we've been waiting for quite a while to get seventeen back online because of a problem with the testing.
Yes, um, it was the testing and also because we, we still have the radionuclides that have to be met for the maximum contaminant level. To be permitted by the state.
I'm just wondering if there's a timeline on having that back online.
And Councilmember Burnham, councilmembers, mayor, um, that project, so the, the project from ARPA, from Mojave County, is coming to a conclusion. We're closing it out this December. So everything is done that we had planned on doing. Once we get the funds for the WIFA, we can hopefully outfit those two wells and then come up with a blending plan that will meet the requirements to blend out down the MCL for radionuclides. That way, we don't have to have the water treatment plant permitted, um, which is the other part we're working on.
Okay, I believe that, I believe the question was directed to the, the two older wells that we had done a pump replacement and then we had the one that had the cave-in and we had to replace, uh, the casing.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, that was well seventeen.
Yes, and so the, the, uh, the holdup was is that we couldn't use those for culinary until we received a approval?
There were two things, mayor. Uh, one, we had to complete the drilling. We had to get the well permitted because it wasn't permitted.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have gotten to the point where we are now working on the, excuse me, AOC, which is the, uh, permit from ADQ, which is Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, excuse me, to, um, go ahead and use that well. So we're at that point right now.
Okay, that, I believe that's, that was his question was, did we actually receive that?
A- and we have not yet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you. This is kind of a domestic thing, but do you enjoy working here?
Um, as a matter of fact, Councilmember Home, yes, I do.
I just wanted to hear that from you because your wife, I met your wife down at the seminar the other day and I was very impressed with the attitude and she, she explained to us how you really enjoyed being here. I wanted to hear it directly from you.
Yeah, um, well, thank you and, and thank her for, you know, kinda saying that because it is a pleasure. It's an honor and a pleasure to work for the community. Um, I really enjoy it. It's not something everybody gets to do every day. And if you've worked in a large community, uh, you know how that can go. And you have two hundred thousand bosses and three hundred thousand people telling you how to do it better. Um, whereas in a small community, it's nice because you have that one-on-one interaction. And I really enjoy having that time with actual residents, contractors, the other people that work here. And, uh, it's, it's much more fun, um, working directly with people and communicating directly with them. So, yeah, I do enjoy it. Plus, I'm from a small town.
I don't see everything, but from what I see, it looks like you're doing an amazingly good job. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we're certainly glad to have you.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you for, uh, thank you for serving. All right, Vance.
My report's on page thirty in your packet. Been working mostly on administrative items. Chief Radley and I had a virtual meeting with PSPRS. We did get the actuarial back. We gasped and sat down. Then we had this meeting with them and did that again. Will be an action item later in the meeting. Uh, we are working, as Liddell mentioned, on several land leases for commercial hangars at the airport. And we're looking forward to next year's budget already, if it ever ends. I didn't mention it in my report, but we're, hopefully, we'll have the financial audit done in time for the February meeting. It doesn't sound promising for the January meeting. Had a meeting with the auditors today. And it's mostly waiting on the ancillary utilities and the landfill audits. Jerry mentioned the ARPA projects coming to completion. We are still getting a lot of discussion. People called. I spent quite a bit of time on the phone today with somebody that's looking to do another residential development. And I was pretty upfront with him and told him that part of that discussion, cause his question was, do we have water? That was one of his questions. That we would have to answer that question is in a development agreement. He would have to front some cost. He was grateful for that. He said he's used to that. It's not a new concept to him. So he understood exactly what I was talking about and I encouraged him to give Jerry a call and get some more information on the actual water issues. And also at Mayor Ream's request, we put together a flow chart that shows the subdivision process and what the different elements are and where they come into play. So if you have any questions on that or anything else, I'd be glad to answer as best I can and if not, that's what I have to offer.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions? I did want this flow chart, I did ask him to include this flow chart. It seems often that we're not sure as a council when things are looked at and approved and, uh, when our part comes into play. And there's only a couple of times that we actually see a project from start to finish. And so there's a lot that's happened before we ever saw it. And it wasn't just somebody putting a rubber stamp on it. They did a lot of work to get there. But it is our responsibility to make sure that we, uh, you know, make, make decisions that are good for the whole, so. That's, I just added that in there to help us understand what those steps along the way are. Thank you, Vance. All right. The town magistrate is not here. Um, okay, item number eleven. Which is our CDBG public hearing number two. So this is where we will receive some input on community development and proposed projects selection. Andy.
Uh, mayor, you need to affirmatively close the meeting, open the public hearing.
Oh, excuse me. We will go ahead and we will close the meeting at five minutes to seven and we will open a public hearing. We will call this public hearing to order. Andrew, would you like to come up to the podium and help us? So for the public participation plan that was approved by the town council on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, we had a meeting, a public hearing number one was held on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, to receive public input on community development and housing needs. From the public participation, a list of potential projects have been assembled. A final selection will need to be made at this meeting. Andrew, can you speak into this?
Okay, so with that, w- we've combined the two, the RA and the SSP with the same public participation process? So we haven't really defined projects for one or the other. Um, and then we, so we came up with six projects from the first meeting. The first would be the, to continue the Hilldale Street improvements. Street, uh, project number two would be to, to do, uh, lighting, to do streetlight projects down Central Street and other areas where we can, you know, determine that we need some lighting on the streets for safety. Um, and project number three would be a general plan update. Project number four would be the street improvements on Academy Avenue from Central Street. Uh, project number five is street drainage improvements on Cook Avenue. And this would include some on Hammond Street to help control the flooding that comes down across there. And it would help, uh, protect Arizona Avenue as well as the, the park there on the other side of Arizona Avenue. But that, that area seems to be a problem when we get a big flood, houses flood and lock. Um, project number six would be street improvements on Township Avenue from Central Street, Hilldale Street. The number six and four, part of those streets are done. And so depending on the amount of fundings, there's a possibility that we could combine those two with one project if, if the funding availability wasn't, depending on how much of the improvement we'd want to do. Like all the sidewalks and streetlights and all that. The projects.
So explain to us again what happened with the fire hydrant one?
So the fire hydrant one, we applied for it, but we didn't score. Well, I don't know what we scored. They placed us about number eight. And I don't, I haven't got the scoring back from them, so I don't know how well we scored with it.
So you don't know whether it would score higher than these?
I'm not sure. Um, I would imagine that that, that that would have scored higher. But see, our, our, our score, you know, we can get a high, high score, but several other communities can get one just barely higher. They could get the same score and they would choose theirs over ours, you know, possibly. If we scored the same as theirs and we've just done a project or two, they may let them do it. I just, I haven't seen that scoring yet.
I just wondered what, why did we not have that back on the list?
We didn't put the, the fire hydrant back on the list because when I, when I suggested that, I was told that the, I think that the...
We applied to it through, uh, for that same project.
There's something else.
Yeah, so there's another, there's another project, another grant that's, that's gonna cover that.
Okay.
These aren't listed in order of priority in your mind, are they?
No, they're not.
Which one to you is, as far as your opinion is concerned, which one would be the top priority?
So if you want my opinion, um, for sure, for the RA grant, I would highly recommend that we do the general plan update. We are required to do it every ten years.
Mayor, we need to be careful not to get a lot of discussion going during the public hearing.
Okay.
Present some, let the public speak and then you close the hearing and then have the discussion.
Do we wanna wait for recommendations to...
Yes, please.
Okay.
We would like to hear from the public though.
Do they even know what projects are on this list?
He just barely, he just barely stated the projects.
Some of the projects say they need an environmental, uh, environmental review and some of them don't.
Can we let the public, let the public speak? If the public has any input, please step up to the mic, state your name, and we will be glad to hear you.
Kimberly Ream. Uh, I was at the first meeting and I absolutely loved the idea of streetlights continuing down Central. If you've been it over at night by the new Bs, um, where those new streetlights are put in, it greatly improves the visibility. And I think to continue that down our main road, um, and still have enough opportunity to maybe put streetlights at some other key intersections that just don't have any. Um, I do recall that meeting, uh, Andy said that was definitely something that seemed like it would fit into that smaller grant budget. Um, and I think being the main road through town, that would be a great improvement.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, we will go ahead and close the portion of the public hearing at three after seven and we'll open, back up the council meeting, open this item up for discussion.
I got a question on, does the street have to be done on Central with curb and gutter before the streetlights go in? Or do they just place, cause there's sections that are not done?
I believe Central Street has curb and gutter all the way from the state line.
The answer to that question is yes, we could place streetlights without curb and gutter first.
Yeah, okay.
My question, does an environmental review, if this, this number one project on here, does that help it, help us get scored higher or anything like that?
For the, the SSP project, an environmental review has to be complete before we do the application. So if we choose one that does not have that environmental review done, we'd have to do that before that application time. That's why we're doing the public participation meeting now rather than wait until, you know, February, March, when we wouldn't have the time to do that. So we, we do have time, I believe, to do a environmental review on anything that we have. But the Central, the Hilldale Street project does have that done. And the environmental review is only good for these projects for about five years. So if we, if we do the review and then don't keep doing, and, and we don't get the project after about five years, we'd have to redo that.
What percentage of the grant, uh, would it reflect the cost of the environmental review?
Not very much. The environmental review is not extremely expensive. It's just time-consuming for, for the staff. And we have not used any funds off of these for administrative costs. Where, that's something we could choose if you, change if you wanted to, but in times past, um, the city has opted to just pay the administrative costs to manage the grant, do the environment, do, do the reviews. And so that more money can go to the actual streets, to the projects.
So out of this list of six projects for five that we're considering for the SSP, um, there is one, which is the, the improvements on Hilldale Street that has the environmental review done.
Correct.
But that acted like the street only went to, what, Academy?
It, it would be to continue the same project that they were doing to the south.
Continue that same project, but it would only be able to go to Academy. I think Academy is where we ended the environmental review also. We didn't wanna go too much further and then have to redo it again anyway.
Yeah, it would stop at the edge of the cemetery where the new development would be on the east side and then continue on the west, correct?
Yeah, so it, it'd be both sides of the street across the cemetery. As soon as we got to that corner, it'd be the, just the, the west side, the other side where the new development is coming in. That side wouldn't be completed.
So my question is, on Hilldale Street, if, if we continued that and we have some of these subdivisions that are, have been approved, like, uh, there's the one on, yeah, the Emily Newton one, and then there's one on the other side of the cemetery. Could we skip those areas like we did in the, on the other side of...
Yes, that's just what I was saying is that when we get to that point, we do one side of the street. The, the portion against theirs that they would be required to do would be left. If they got to theirs first and did that project, then ours would just connect onto that. It'd be the same engineering, so it would all, it'd all work. Cause they're gonna be required to meet what we've engineered there.
That seems like that project would make it go even further, tying all those, if, if the subdivisions were doing their part, it'd make that go three or four times and what do, normally would...
I still think it'd be nicer to either, well, as far as the general plan, weren't we gonna visit that sooner than, than this? Cause if you do a, if you do a grant on it, isn't it saying we get it, we don't get the money until twenty twenty-six?
Well, the, the RA, which we're looking at for the general plan, if the council so chooses, that funding we get every three years. So it would be coming next year is when the funding would come and then the process itself takes nearly a year.
Right, and, and what I was gonna say is that we have to do that every ten years. The last one was done in two thousand sixteen. So this is the last chance we have to do it with the RA grant. If we try to do it anything other, if we don't do it with the RA grant now, then we would have to come up with some other funds to get that done because it's not an eligible one for the SSP.
And how likely is it to score high?
So on the RA grant, we don't need to score. That is guaranteed funds. That, that is ones that we, that allocated for us.
Would it cost that much, half a million to seven hundred grand?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So the best case scenario is it would take, if one of these happened every year, it'd take six years to get all six of these, right? I mean, that's the best case scenario.
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be doing really awesome to get all six of these summer, ten, every each year.
You know, as far as the street lighting is concerned, we need to tap into the same spigot that Cameron has, you know, all those, those, uh, big old fancy lights down there to Cameron. South going towards Flagstaff, there are dozens and dozens of those streetlights that are lighting up nothing but sagebrush out there.
They're on the, they're on the...
They're on the highway, but they're, it's ridiculous. But anyway, we need that same spigot.
Yeah, that would be nice. Um, the streetlight project is the other one, I would say, is a very viable and, and a good project. So my recommendation was the general plan for the RA and then either the Hilldale Street or the lighting for SSP. And I'm, I'm happy either direction with it, even though the lighting one would be a lot more work for me in the next two or three months.
But it would serve so much better.
And it's a safety thing as well.
Yeah, I think they should do the lighting too.
Okay.
I personally, uh, would love to see Hilldale Street finished, uh, but tha- that's a little scary that we gotta come up with half a million or more in the next two years to do this other thing, so.
Yes, that it's not Hilldale Street or the general plan.
It's a, it's two different grants.
We're talking the general plan and Hilldale Street or the lighting.
Oh, I see.
So we get a choice between, well, between whatever ones you guys want, but between Hilldale Street and, and the street lighting. So, but again...
I think the street lighting would benefit more people.
But again, we have done the environmental review, so if we go too many, too much longer with that, we'd have to redo that.
Hilldale Street, we wanna come back to Hilldale Street.
But you didn't act like it was that big of an expense?
It's not an expense, but it's a sure lot of work for me.
Didn't you say it's kind of a slow time of year? Just kidding.
I, I love, I hate loose ends.
Well, thank you. We'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and... The council has any discussion?
Well, I'm definitely all in favor, all in flavor of the updated, the general plan for sure. But I think the streetlights is a big safety issue.
Mayor, you might wanna just do the RA and then have some more discussion on the other.
Vote on one?
Do number twelve and then move to thirteen for further discussion.
All right, let's go ahead and, uh, we'll entertain a motion on item number twelve.
We'll make a motion that we choose the Colorado City General Plan Update.
Excuse me, item number eleven. We need a motion.
No, it's twelve.
We closed it.
It is twelve.
This is one we gotta have more discussion on.
You, you're on twelve, you're on twelve and thirteen right now.
Okay, so what we would like a motion for is for the RA, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second your...
I'm on a twelfth.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of using the general plan.
Who, who did the second?
All in favor of selecting...
The RA to do the...
Eleven or twelve?
Item number twelve.
We're skipping...
The general plan update for the RA project.
We'll do the general plan for that.
We will take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries to use the RA grant to, for the general plan update. Okay, we'll have item number thirteen. This is the place where we will have some discussion on either the streetlight, lighting project or Hilldale Street. So it sounds like to me is the popular choice. Is that, am I mistaken?
I like Hilldale Street, but...
I personally, I, I love both of them. I'm, I'm man, I'd love to have the street lighting. But I, man, we just got so many chunks of roads that are beautiful and then, you know.
Well, the fact that it only does a little teeny section, cause everybody has to be triple bonded and certified and everything to do a half a mile, I think the streetlights would be a lot more beneficial for more people.
I think there's always roads that need to be improved.
There's a lot of them.
And I think that the, um, the path to get from point A to point B with, you know, we have sidewalk all the way out to Bs and you go down that road from Arizona Avenue clear out to Mojave in the night and it is dark.
I've done it. It's terrible.
And so...
And that's where a lot of the kids ride their bikes, that path to get out to the store. And I just think for safety reasons, it would be a better option.
And not to mention, we're, we have businesses and things coming into the middle of town right here. And, and I would love to see us, you know, finish some of these projects. Like I said, the, the strip between the curb and the sidewalk, uh, lighting, you know, is another part of that. Let's, as we're making some progress here, let's keep that progress. Let's do a little bit more work and keep that progress. How much would it cost to do the, to repeat the Hilldale, the impact, the, the environmental impact? If we have to repeat that again on that section, how much does that cost?
Oh, that's free.
It's just time, time consuming.
Andrew doesn't.
I see, okay.
Those, those streetlights are really expensive and I, I don't know how much money you're talking about here. But if you're only talking between five and seven hundred thousand dollars, depending on the type of streetlights.
I'm not even talking the fancy ones. I'm talking about getting a street light up on each intersection.
Those ones down to Cameron, those are twenty-five thousand dollars a piece. There's dozens of them out there doing nothing.
Yeah, but we can't have those. All right.
But I'm just wondering how many lights is possible here in, in terms of the money divided into lights? Has anybody done that calculation?
Andrew, did you, did you say that, uh, that you thought we could complete that to the state line up Central Street?
With the lighting?
Andy said there was probably some other spots we could do.
Sounded like, yeah, in here, it said we should have extra for a few other.
Same ones we have out there.
Is it?
I think there's some standards. Streetlights, we just need the bulbers placed around them.
We haven't really identified any spots officially for the streetlights. If we choose that one, we would just have to go and find the, whatever areas are gonna be the most, the better served by streetlights and start doing that and it'd be just like the, the fire hydrant project. We would probably identify way more than what we can do, do the environmental review on them and then just do as much as we can do.
Would it place the infrastructure to add more later in between if we needed?
I think that most, mostly to, to, trying to figure out how I would justify that in a grant because you can't do a partial project.
I understand that, but if you ran a wire three blocks and you only put two lights in, could you come back later and put one in the middle?
Why, that, that's always possible.
Well, I'm just, that's, that was my question.
Absolutely.
If we didn't have funding to do all of the light poles we wanted, but the... If we didn't have funding to do all of the light poles we wanted, but the wire was run to, to light up the most critical places.
Right, and, but see, that would be, my struggle is that we would, we would take each spot, figure out how to get power, wherever power is for those. We wouldn't particularly run wires to every spot that we want, we wouldn't be able to justify that cost in a grant.
So how high do you think that one would rate for streetlights?
I think that we could, you know, if we, if we articulate it right and show and, I, I would probably want to get some letters from some people, especially people that, that walk this, those streets and, and use them, it's people in the area.
But does it have a higher chance than Hilldale Street for scoring high?
Hard to say, but I, I think that it would, I think that they would score similar.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I like the streetlight project, but.
I like the lights.
I'm for lights.
Uncle for lights?
I like the street.
Should we take a vote?
I like all of them.
I do, too.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we vote on the, the streetlights.
I'll second it. Okay, you have a motion and a second, all in favor for the streetlight project, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see unanimous vote for the streetlight project. Item 14, zoning map amendment, parcel 404-53011B, from R120 to R112.
This is located at Township and Redwood, and the applicant has a half acre parcel he is requesting to zone down to quarter acre. This was recommended for approval by the, uh, planning commission at their December 2nd meeting.
I was just gonna say, all three of them are pretty straightforward as far as that goes. Uh, the two of them pretty well fit into our general plan, we've approved these across the board. The other flag lot, uh, with all the kickback from the, from the residents in the area and the, the problem we've had with flag lots in the past, absolutely make this one that I would agree with the, I, I would say we go with what the recommendations of the plan, zoning board on all three. I read through them all.
I believe they withdrew item number 16, is that correct?
Really need to act on each one of them individually.
Yeah, we need to.
Okay, we will, does the council have any discussion on item number 14? To split the, split it into quarters? Okay, if not, uh, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Item number 15, zoning map amendment, parcel 404-53608, from RE1A residential to R18, single family residential.
Okay, this one is a parcel that is out on Pioneer Street and Cherry Avenue. It's got a rather large house on the north end of the parcel, and they are asking for an R18 zone, so they can, uh, basically leave that larger house on approximately a half acre and then do two smaller lots that would each be just smaller than a quarter acre.
And they fit within the-
And it does.
-general plan as far as the-
And that's why you couldn't do an R112?
Right.
Is that, is that house an R2?
That house, that is a, uh, right now, it is a single family, uh, the zoning is RE1A, one acre. That house is a candidate, though, for the conditional use that we approved a little bit, but they haven't started that process yet.
Okay.
I'll make that motion and approve that.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. All right, item number 16 has been-
Right, Friday night, I received a written request to withdraw this from consideration. So after some discussion with the applicants, they, they elected to withdraw it from consideration.
Just for future, future planning for these that, what problems did the planning commission have with it specifically?
Well, the, the biggest problem voiced by the planning commission, and I did include their draft minutes in your packet, the planning commission, the thing that really got them was the proposed layout, more than anything else, and then, of course, having so many of the neighboring residents and property owners coming out saying, we really don't want that in our neighborhood. Now, that in and of itself isn't a deal breaker, uh, for the applicant, but the planning commission took quite some issue with their proposed layout, and also felt like they should respect the, the residents of that area and, and their wishes, too, to, as much as we could, and still treat the property owners properly. Well, gets to be a little bit of a balancing act sometimes.
I did have a comment on the, on the, uh, item number 15. If you'll change the, the last sentence on that for us, when you get, that should say the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Which?
Item 15. And item 16 is the same way.
The planning commission made the recommendation of approval by us.
Okay. All right, item 17, consider the bid award for Colorado City Municipal Airport Wildlife-
Did we vote 16?
16 is withdrawn.
Oh.
Consider the bid award for the deterrent fence project, Vance.
Okay, this, this is a project that is putting the, uh, last of the buried skirting around the airport. It's being funded by ADOT. The bids were opened on December 5th with SNL Underground as the apparent low bidder. Our engineers did their homework and came back, and in your packet on page 58 is their letter of recommendation to award that bid to SNL Underground in the amount of $212,500.
Does the council have any comments or discussion on it?
Actually hoping to begin construction in early January, as fast as they get the material here.
All right, with that, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept it, and I'll go ahead and award the bid to SNL.
I'll second that.
Give it to Jerusha.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, none opposed. Item 18, consider resolution approving enrollment in Arizona Public Safety Retirement System, known as PSPRS, Vance.
Okay, as you'll recall, I'm in page 63 in your packet, I've done a written summary of what we've done. We did the actuariales, we got them back, Chief Bradley and I had a meeting with PSPRS. We're at that point where the town council has got to make a decision, and this is a retirement system that is for the police officers. It's different than ASRS, which we won't get into right now. Basically, in order to enroll, we have to enroll with any back, uh, underfunded paid. According to their actuarial, that is $657,550. And so it's, we would want to go seek some external funding to finance that over time, probably over a 10-year period, just for cash flow and expenditure limitation purposes.
Exactly what is back underfunded paid.
Okay, what they did in their actuarial, and that's on page 64 and 65, they went back to the date of hire for each of the officers and calculated what their pension will be from the date of hire.
And they've gotta bridge that gap.
And then we have to pay that amount to bring them up to zero, or to, to where that, that liability is paid. We do have one officer that's gonna go in in tier two, all the others will be tier three. Tier three is, is the, uh, one they implemented a few years ago to kind of bring the whole thing into control. So it's kind of a big decision to make, cause once you say yes, then you don't ever get to say no. It's, it's a permanent decision for the, the town. I know there's other cities, there's some cities in the state that do have PSPRS for their officers, and everybody else is on a 457 plan. We would discontinue any contributions to the 457 plan for the officers and only pay into this, if that's the direction the council goes. As you'll recall, this has been one of the things that the injunctive order, the judge overseeing that has asked about time and time again. It is actually a factor in recruiting and retention. You get officers with some investment in their pension, they tend to stay.
And they're nicer? Just kidding.
Well, they have a, they have a reason to stay.
I know, and that, I think it is a good thing.
Uh, it's just a big bite, and it will be quite a bit of work for myself and Chief Bradley over the next few months, but that's okay, it's like Andy said, we don't mind, we get paid to do it.
How do you feel about your ability to find that funding?
I think we'll be able to-
And budget for it?
We've, well, by spreading it out, it becomes a lot more budgetable.
Will they accept payment plan of some sort?
PSPRS will not, so we will be looking to-
We have to come up with that 650.
We will be looking to, uh, some kind of a traditional financing or somebody that does municipal capital financing, things like that. There's, there's options out there, it just, we'd have to get right on to it, though, to meet this timeline.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any questions or comment?
I would just say, I, I think there's a lot of value in having people that have been here a while, that have learned, learned the town, learned, learned about who we are and, and come here to stay, and I think we need to do what we can to, to keep it that way.
What, what would be wrong with a no vote?
We would have a judge to appease in some manner.
How about a maybe vote?
It's do or die.
Um, we've been asked to, we have been asked to, uh, produce some type of retirement plan for the officers.
And one thing to consider is if you push, kick the can down the road, it's only gonna cost more on the unfunded liability.
Right, we'll have to keep going back, yeah.
It's not going to be less, is the-
Right. Are you recommending a yes vote, Vance? Yes.
I'll second that.
With that, we will entertain a motion.
Me and Vance will make the motion. I'll make the motion, I'm sorry. I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ethan and a second by John, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously to enter into the SPRS. Item number 19, I do not believe that we have any items for executive session at this time.
No, we do not.
Item 20, uh, budget report and order to pay due claims, Vance.
Okay, the budget report, and Shirley put these in a different order just to confuse The budget report begins on page 74 after the payment approval report. We are up 42% of the fiscal year. Our tax revenues are coming in at 33%, so they're a little bit lower than estimated. Our permits and fees are coming in at 34, and that's gonna probably balance out next month a little higher percent because we had like eight lot splits come in and paid on Friday night. Our IGA revenues are a little bit low, but they're staying there, that Hilldale's done a good job of keeping paid up. The Fire District has been doing a good job of getting caught up and determined to keep up, they have their, their challenges. Overall, the general fund revenue is at 33% of budgeted, so it's a little bit lower than we hoped. On the, uh, general fund expenditures, the admin is at 44%. Building, which includes planning and zoning, is at 28%. Law enforcement's at 41%, thank you, Chief Bradley. He's been working overtime to keep his budget managed. This is one of the first years I've seen the admin budget more out of skew than the police, so. The magistrate court, 23%. I always put the court IGA caveat in there. Dispatch at 34, parks and wrecks at 36, airport at 29. We will incur some additional expenditures there as we move forward on this hangar thing, there'll be some cost the city will need to put in. Overall, our general fund expenditures are at 34%, so we're, we're in line with the revenue.
Neck and neck, yeah.
On the HERF funding, it's coming in at 42% and the expenditures are at 42%.
Thank you.
So for the council's approval, unpayment approval report on the first page, uh, the larger items, the, there's one about a fourth way down the page for 1,747, it's for photo registration services for the county of Mojave. Also, right down below that, we have the general election and primary election, uh, both about 1,200. Then the next item of, uh, noteworthyness is on page four, and it's up towards the top, it's for the airport. It's the instrument calibration, that is 1,154, about halfway down that page, you have a charge in the amount of 3,849. It's for UPM, pot hole mix. And then down towards the bottom is one, the very last one is 1,600, and that one is welding rods, uh, so it's equipment repairs. And then on page five, uh, up towards the top, we have one for 1,098, that's for parts. No, and then about halfway down that page, on page five, you have one for 37,668. That one is the principal payment for the excavator and loader. Um, and then just right below that, the next large one for 52,844, that's work on the Central Street, that's the CDBG project. Do you have any questions on any of the others?
Does the council have any questions on those? Okay. Well, with that, you've heard the budget report and items for payment, with that, we will- you've heard the budget report and items for payment, with that, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pay due claims as they come and do.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Item number twenty-one, this is a time for any council member to bring up other items for awareness. Council will not be able to take action on items brought up at this time, but the council can direct staff to do additional research on matters or schedule them for action on a future agenda. Does the council have any items to comment?
South Central stuff again, I mean, years and years ago, we went through the middle of town here and put in fruitless mulberry trees, and that was a good idea for a little bit, now they're pulling up the sidewalks and stuff. Don't know that we wanna do that, but I would really love to see us finish some of these planter boxes between the curb and the sidewalks. Something permanent to keep the weeds out of them, something that looks nice. You're talking flow through our town, you have bees right there on the end, and then, you know, you can go for a block and it looks pretty nice, and then there's if we leave it to the residents, then I, I think at least that area, in between the curb and the sidewalk, we oughta consider doing something.
It is planned to have our irrigation system extended up in there, and we have done a lot of research on street appropriate trees, no, we're not putting mulberries or poplars in.
They're awesome for shade, but-
Keep the Chinese yam up too.
What, where are we on the-
How to fit it in the budget, how fast, how soon.
What, what is the status on finishing up the irrigation over here? Where we tore out all the trees and-
We need to have a discussion with block forty-five and see what they're planning to do there, 'cause that'll help drive what needs to happen.
He indicated to me that he wanted to match the trees that are across the street with his sitting apartment or the-
If, if somebody from, from that organization could come and meet with us, then we can map out a plan that's a coordinated plan, and we'll figure that out.
I'll lean on them.
I just have one comment. I appreciate seeing the Christmas lights on this building for the first time ever.
I was gonna say that too.
Is there, is there an ability to make some of them colored?
Get picky.
They look nicer like they are.
Sorry, I'm a wild child.
But I did have a question, oh, after your-
I was gonna say, last month, we specifically asked if we could put white lights up.
Remember, he said keep it classy?
That's amazing, okay.
It is classy.
Alright.
I had a question, is it possible to do an R one fourteen zoning? That you could, that we actually could offer as a city, possibly if people wanted to do larger lots, maybe offer something?
We, we can have, we can define a zone that's, you're saying a zone that between-
So that you say-
Between the quarter and the half acre.
Yeah, so you say basically if somebody, okay, this is third acres, if people do third acres and bigger, there is some sort of an incentive?
We absolutely could amend the code and incorporate that, it's, be a little bit of a process, but it's very doable.
Would that be-
But also, offer something to people, because right now with everybody having to put in curb and gutter and everything, they think the only way I can afford this is to smash in high density?
If, if they are gonna do a subdivision-
No, that's fine, I'm just saying, but on big street fronts, like say somebody has a single acre, instead of trying to, to put it into-
I, I didn't include it in my report, and I was going to. So we'll have a little more comprehensive numbers in January. But we've got over a mile, six thousand plus feet of curb and sidewalk, and, and a lot of them are starting to tie together.
No, it, it is good, but I, I'm trying to say, hey, let's bring some larger lots.
Right, that curb and sidewalk is not gonna make or break them.
If somebody wants to split an acre in half, it takes all their profits.
Well, that's, that's what they'll have to decide.
So then they decide to do high density in all these areas.
I, I really like, as far as what Paul was talking about up there in that flag lot, I really like having areas where you can have acre, acre lots where people are able to take care of them and-
Or half acre.
Right, I think this is a great conversation to have when we do the update.
General plan update, yep.
Because that will be when we are making decisions about where those zones and what those- What that looks like.
But when are we gonna look into that, when do you, in January?
Well, that'll be, we've approved it to be the SSB, so it's, it is, the RA will fund that, so we will be doing that shortly. Those meetings will be happening this, during this next year, so.
I have a question for Vance. Don't, this might bend everybody's mind a little bit, but Vance, what would it take to change the name of Colorado City to a different name?
What do you want it to be, Hilldale, Arizona?
It's not something I've put any research into, so I don't know.
I expected that coming from one of the young kids, but come on, Paul.
No, I, I really do think that it's getting to the point where we need to do it. The name that, the name that I think we ought to consider personally is the name Valentine. Change the name of our town to Valentine, and I think that there's a reason for it, and discussing this and thinking about it with other people is, in regards to some of the issues that we faced with the stigma of religious stigma and different things, I think that it'd be a message, a message well sent to the outlying cities and downstate that we're serious about changing the persona of our community.
Already a Valentine, Arizona?
No, there's not. There's, there's a, it's just an idea, of course, at this point, but it's something we, I think we ought to start wrapping our mind around it.
Why you gotta make me be the old fuddy-duddy, Tom?
I love the name Hilldale, Arizona.
Okay, do we have any other council comments at this time?
I just thought I'd break the ice.
Thank, thank you. No other comments, we will call this meeting adjourned at, what, sixteen minutes to eight?